UBSutter.live's local government livestreams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske truck rentals. Details at plumaslakeselfstorage.com.
Yes, Director Pearl?
Yes.
Director Clough?
Yes.
Motion carries for approving to absent.
All right, starting at District 6.1, Consider Approving Budget Amendment 2 for fiscal year 2024-2025.
Yes, this request before is set for the budget amendment 2. It basically reflects changes, you know, based on new information. This item went through the committees twice. The fiscal analysis breaks down what's happening here. There are two kinds of budget amendments. One, there are budget transfers from between line items. There's no additional funding needed. The other budget adjustments would ask for additional funding. Are there any questions on some of the particular items?
Any questions from board members? Only to call out the fact that we're still staying in the black on holidays, correct? Nothing's...
No, nothing is, no. We're all through this particular time.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Just wanted to confirm. Any other questions?
No, but she keeps us in line quite well.
All right, any questions from the public? No questions. I'm going to approve the budget amendments for year 2024-2025.
A second.
First a second, please call over.
Director Purvey?
Yes.
Director Pearl?
Yes.
Director Clough?
Yes.
Motion carries for approving to absent.
Right, we have a presentation from Paige Hensley from Yuba LaFco on special districts' journey of...
Thank you, thank you very much. Hello, and for those of you who don't know me, then I have a name. I'm Ms. Paige Hensley, I'm Executive Officer for Yuba LaFco. And I want to thank you all for inviting me here this evening. I'm lucky to speak with you and share a little bit about LaFco and share about what it takes to get to special district representation on the LaFco board. I'll make it clear. I'm going to start out with a little bit of history with LaFco. You can go to the next area now, thank you. I'll tell you a little bit about our local LaFco. We've got five members on our commission currently. We've got two county supervisors, two city council members, and a public member at large. And there's also an alternate for each one of those. So, a total. Next slide. Okay, a little bit of history on pre-LAFco. Got to go back to post World War II. When the population and the housing boom went great in San California. Lots of suburbs going in, streets, automobiles scrambled to find financing for extended services. But not city annexation wars at the time. Liberation of limited purpose special districts. At that time, Governor Pat Brown decided to form a commission on urban problems, focusing on the need to encourage orderly boundaries. And out of that commission arose LaFco. It was created in 1963. It was formed as a legislature's watchdog to manage the orderly growth. It's an independent regulatory authority for the state of California. Sometimes we're also known as the state steward of good government. LaFco's mission, given to us by the state, is to encourage orderly boundaries, discourage urban sprawl, preserve ag land and open space, and promote efficient and sustainable public services. The state decided they didn't want it to be a state commission, a state point commission. They wanted it to be local. So there's no state appointees. Every LaFco, I'm sorry, every county in California has a LaFco. We're an independent district, or I'm sorry, an independent agency, independent from the county and from the cities. We are tasked with a different mission statement, so to speak. And when you sit on LaFco, you're supposed to be taking off your county, your special district, or city hat and putting on a LaFco hat. So, most LaFcos, majority of LaFcos these days are independent. Years ago, most of them were staffed by county staff at the time. But over time, it was deemed to be a conflict of interest. And so more and more LaFcos have gone independent. A little bit of history with Yuba LaFco. I started in the planning department back about 22 years ago. Part of my duties was clerking the LaFco commission. And, but we went independent in '06, and I went with it. So, that's how it's been here locally. We also, in addition to our LaFco law, which is known as the Cortezy-Knox hurt's first, uh... CKH. We also have the capacity to create local policies that are unique to each county. Each county, you know, has unique things. And so we create our own policies that are in addition to the state LaFco law. There's been six major revisions to the state law over the 60 years. And LaFco is, of course, just unique to California. Go out of state and they'll say, "What's LaFco?" Even in state, they say, "What's a LaFco?" I guess I didn't mention it, stands for Local Agency Formation Commission. What does LaFco do? LaFco forms new cities on special districts. It changes city and district boundaries. We do annexations, consolidations, dissolutions, disincorporations. We, of course, do sphere of influence studies. We approve those for cities and districts. We approve municipal service reviews as well. We conduct those studies and approve those. We approve and authorize services provided by districts. Sometimes districts need to extend services outside of their boundaries. We're capable of doing that as well. Usually that's in the case of, on an emergency basis, if it may down. Depending on public health and safety, bailing well, that type of a thing. It doesn't always have to be for that reason, but usually it is. I'm sorry, I'm not telling you.
That's okay. Next slide.
Okay, again, independent LaFcos. We briefly talked about that earlier. Commissioners make final decisions. Given that local policies reflecting our unique and local circumstances, LaFco decisions cannot be appealed to any other administrative body. If they exhaust all their requests for reconsideration, the appeals to the LaFco commission, the next step in that is going to court and suing over that. There's nothing over our commission administratively that will change the decision. And LaFco staff is accountable to the commission and the state statutes. Next slide. I already kind of briefly went over our composition. For Yuba LaFco, it's the two supervisors, two of the city council members, one public member at large, and all of the alternates. Four counties that have special districts seated on them. They also get two members to sit on their, on their boards. And there are 32 LaFcos, 32 counties in the state that have special district representation. Next slide. I brought a map here designated in yellow. Those are the counties that have special districts seated on their commission. Next slide. And again, to display it in a different way, a chart of which LaFcos have special districts seated on their boards and which do not. Next slide. How LaFcos are funded? We are required to adopt a budget every fiscal year. We are funded by the county and the cities. Yuba LaFco is funded half by the county and half by the cities. In special districts where they are seated, or special counties where LaFcos have special districts seated on the board, it's divided a third, a third, and a third between the county, the cities, and the special districts. The law does allow for local funding formulas, though. There are special districts seated on some LaFcos that don't pay a third. Sometimes there's budgetary constraints, and it's prohibitive for them to, to sit on the board. So some, some LaFcos have come up with some creative ways of doing it. I've heard of some LaFcos, they only require the districts to pay 10% of the LaFco budget. I've heard of a stepping stone process. They come in paying 10%, following nearly 20%. So, a graduated way like that. So, there's different ways it can be handled. It does have to be approved by the current commission. So if, if special districts are wanting to be seated on the board, if you want to try and work out an arrangement like that, you know, welcome to do that. Our processing fees, we have fee deposits for all of our projects. Those type of fees help to offset our expenses. I also wanted to mention, it might be covered on another slide, but just in case. When special districts are seated on the board, it's proportionate to each district's budget. So the larger districts that have larger budgets, they're going to pay a larger portion of that third. And again, it'll be, you know, a graduated step according to the budget. So you get these little small cemetery districts. I remember the last time we tried this, it's been over 15 years ago. And the breakdown of it came to a cemetery district had to pay $1. So it just, it's kind of on the district's size of their budget. Okay, next slide. And LaFco's jurisdictional authority. Again, that includes boundaries for any two counties, like county service areas, CSAs, wherever those, boundaries for cities and most special districts. We do not have any authority over GPAs, mutual water companies, community facilities, Malalooz districts, school or college districts. The, it's the actual county boundary we do not, but within the county we do. Bridging highway districts, concurrent district zones of benefit, none of that are we... Do we have any authority over? Next slide. Again, just a little more detailed chart here of what LaFcos can do. Corporations, district formations, dissolutions, some corporations, annexations, detachments, the outside area service agreements I mentioned, spheres of influence, activate latent powers. Occasionally, like a community service district will be formed only having the authority to do certain functions, and they'll come back at a later date. We've had, the most recent one I can think of is up in the foothills, believe it was Comptonville? Densky? Where they came back to us because they wanted to provide park and recreational facilities up there. So they had to come to LaFco for that. Divestiture of powers, consolidations, mergers, so on. Next slide. LaFcos also have our, some of the things we're tasked with can be used as planning function, the development and update of spheres of influence for cities and districts, preparing them in a service reviews for all local jurisdictions, and will work cooperatively on growth, preservation, and service delivery issues. Slide. Administrators, administrators modification of existing agencies and creation of new ones, consider boundary changes, control extension of public services. And all that being said, we are prohibited from directly regulating land use. That is all of part of LaFco's regulatory function. Next slide. Some of what we do is used as a local resource for others, shared service models, different studies that we are involved in are used that exchange, exchanges information about other local service delivery. Model inter-agency agreements, model for tax sharing agreements for revenue generation, governance options. Training and educational resources for compliance with state laws and best practices. Cal LaFco puts on a lot of, quite a few good workshops and conferences and are educational. I don't know if any of you have ever had any interest in attending those, but you have the ability to do that. If you would like information for that as it comes along, I'd be happy to pass that along to you. Historical, current, and training info. 60 years, that says 50, but 50 plus 60 years of regular formations and boundary changes on local level. Tears of influence studies go back to the early 1970s. Municipal service reviews came into existence and requirements in the early 2000s. Next slide. LaFco is subject to multiple state laws, one being our Cortezy-Knox hurt's break act, as I did mention. That is the LaFco law. Brown Act, subject to, all of our projects are subject to CEWA, subject to revenue and tax code, local reform act, and principles act. In a little brief video, sphere of influence, plan for probable physical boundaries and service area of a local agency is determined by commission. A good outlook on proposed growth for the next five to 10 years going forward. Municipal service reviews. In order to do a sphere update, we're required to do a municipal service review. State laws suggest every five years, but it reads as needed. So that five years is not mandatory. That being said, Yuba LaFco is overdue for some. Some of the items we're required to review in municipal service review. Growth and population projections for the affected area. Local, or the location characteristics of disadvantaged and incorporated communities. Present and planned capacity of public facilities and adequacy of public services, including infrastructure needs, deficiencies, related sewers and service industrial, water, structural, fire protection, and the areas not as ducks that isn't, disincorporated. Let me, let's see. My mind just went blank. Disadvantaged. Disadvantaged, yeah. Unincorporated communities, thank you. Financial ability of agencies to provide services. Status of, and opportunities for shared facilities, accountability for community service needs. And, and this is the latest one, and any other matter related to the effect of efficient service delivery. That's been added recently. Next is, next slide, please. So special districts on LaFco, why and how? So if you have a seat on LaFco, you gain a seat at the table when they're making decisions. As I mentioned, special districts have two votes on a typical commission. On all the deliberations that greatly affect special districts. Most of the decisions LaFcos are making pertain to special districts. So it makes sense to have a voice at the table. Again, you, it gives you a voice on annexations, detachments, reorganizations, consolidations, so on. It gives you an equal participation, an equal to the cities and the county. And, and districts can bring a different perspective to LaFco that's distinct from some of the other general government entities. Districts are service-focused, bring a knowledge of infrastructure, local infrastructure. And it also helps to build better working relationships with the cities and the county. Next slide. The cost of being on LaFco. As I mentioned earlier, typical, typical commissions with special district seating, representatives on their commission, it's divided in a third, a third, and a third. Third county, third cities, third independent special districts. Independent special district share shall be a portion, in proportion to each district's total revenues as a percentage of the combined total district revenues in the county, which I mentioned earlier. Can I say, can you get ahead of myself? Okay, next slide. Districts, what they need to do to initiate the process. It can go one of two ways. It can be by way of a resolution, like a resolution of invitation from the existing LaFco commission. If you get tired of waiting for that. Districts can file, adopt a resolution, and file that with, or submit it to LaFco. It needs to be from, it can be from one district or multiple districts, but it has to reach a threshold that totals a representation of 10% of the assessed value of taxable land in the county to initiate it. So if Oakland wanted to do that, and your, your assessed value totals 10% of the total county's assessed value, then that would be doable. Or joining with some other fire districts that wanted it. I can recall a couple of them, of the special districts that were in support of it 15 years ago when we did it. Already 784 was the one that initiated it back in the day. When the fire was on board, they gave us a resolution of support. I don't recall what Oakland did at the time. Maybe some of you were around then, but... Anyways, so that's how that's initiated. If that is achieved, then once LaFco receives it, LaFco has to adopt a resolution of intention. And we send out a message to all the special districts then, that LaFco has the intention of going through this process. LaFco has to give notice and call a meeting. The, all the independent special districts, it's called a special district selection committee. It's comprised of the, usually the providing officer of the special district. And if they're not available, that district can appoint one to fill in for them. So we call that meeting together. And it can, it can be in person, or it can be done through the mail, actually. And it's a ballot, so to speak, where they, each, each individual district takes a vote and to see if they want to accept or deny getting on LaFco. And it has, there's a timeframe on it, and I don't recall the timeframe. I want to say it's 30 days, or if we don't get a majority of response from the districts, we can extend it about 60 days, one month. But what it takes at that point is a majority of the districts voting to be accepted on LaFco. And Yuba County has about 33 independent special districts. So we're looking for a threshold of about 17 districts, we can board. I guess I'm not on the slide wrong. If, all that being said, if that's achieved, and we were to reach that majority threshold to get representation on the, on the commission, again, it's, it's done by way of ballot. LaFco sends out ballots, and the special, only special districts vote to elect, or they nominate people representing the special districts to sit on the board. And the top two nominees who get the most votes, they are appointed as their representatives to sit on the LaFco commission. That pretty much does it for my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. Do you have any more?
Questions from board members? I've got a bunch, but I need to go on.
I've got a few. So if we decided to go through with this, I have no idea how much Oakland's assessed value is.
Right.
But if, if it, if it went to the vote to all of the 33 special districts, and you said some of them could only be required to pay a dollar to be a part of this?
Well, years ago, when we, we came up with a spreadsheet, that was a scenario. It was divided a third, a third, and a third, and then proportionate to the district's third on their, based on their revenues. I have to go to the auditor to achieve that.
To get it, but...
Yeah, and if that's how it's...
I'm not, not exact, but what my question is, is when these special districts are getting an invitation or to vote, are they able to be able to understand that they don't have to pay a lot of money if that's what it comes? Is, is my question making sense?
Yeah.
Can we educate them that they're not going to be going broke, whether they're supported?
What I would like to do, if LaFco were to receive a resolution from a special district to initiate this. I know I'm required to have that meeting, but I would like it to be informative for them, kind of like I'm doing here, have a presentation for all of them. Invite them all, have a presentation explaining it. I'd like to do that before going, you know, holding the actual vote. And again, if you're interested, I tried to get it for this meeting from the auditor. I got a spreadsheet, but there were some errors in it, so I'm having to go back. But if you would like me to get that information from you, how it would break down approximately, district to district.
But, yeah, to get support, I mean, if I'm on a cemetery district that has no funding.
Correct.
And, you know, you're going to say, oh, you've got to pay to be on this, and they're going, oh, we can't afford anything. But if we can educate them that they may not have to pay.
Exactly.
It may be very minimal, then they may be interested in coming to the board. So that, that was kind of my question. And the others, as I was writing down, they were kind of answering, answering as I was writing them. So I was going to ask how many districts? You said 33, so we would need 17 to come on to, to make it happen.
We do have a couple more than the 33. However, the way LaFco works is those other districts I'm not counting in ours is because they also carry over into another county. And the way LaFco works is the majority of whatever district crosses a county line, wherever the majority of their district sits, that LaFco has jurisdiction over it.
So like you can have a little bit to Nueva and something beautiful, then?
Right.
Is that based on size or population?
Um, that's a good question. I believe it's acreage, but I, I haven't, I wasn't done that prior.
Do you know what the 2024-2025 budget was for LaFco?
I do regret that. Well, I can give you our most recent, the 25, 26 right here. Our total expenditure budget was $418,495. We typically have a carryover. Sure, we had $175,000 estimated carryover. And then minus our anticipated revenues, the actual apportionment amount that was divided between the county and the cities was $218,495.
Okay, so you're going to go from $109,000 between two of those to?
To the cities.
Yes.
So their, their cost would come down.
Right, but we're talking less than $100,000 split between 33 special districts.
Well, that would be the trend, but that's provided we continue to have a nice carryover that we can put forward to the next year.
Well, let's say no, no revenues coming in, you're at 480, so $160,000.
Our antici, our anticipated revenue is only $25,000 per year with our project fees.
Okay.
So most of the difference is made up by what our carryovers have been.
Okay, so, so generous would be $200,000 between 33 special districts.
And it's a big one, some of the sliding supply. With, with more revenue like us.
With a lot.
Cemetery districts that don't have the revenue.
Right.
Yuba County water agencies, they're going to be the biggest one.
And do you know if they're supported? I haven't heard them say.
I've not had any conversations with them about this. And I don't recall, I don't recall what it was 15 plus years ago either.
I, I believe Mary Jane's had conversations. I think it should happen, I think that they are, at that.
But yeah, so if that is something you're interested in, I can work with the auditor to get some kind of a approximate spreadsheet and give that to you folks.
I think that would be good, just so we had a...
Yeah. Yeah.
Keep an eye on the fiscal.
Right.
Um. So when you said that the commissioners make the final decision, um.
On, on projects.
Okay, so is that approving projects, forcing projects, requiring projects? That kind of final decision? Uh, I'm trying to figure out LAFCO. What, what would you say that LAFCO's primary purpose is? Is it regulatory? Is it action? Is it research?
I'm going to say it's mostly making decisions involving jurisdictional boundaries.
Okay, but when two jurisdictions are fighting over the boundary?
Yeah.
Or when one jurisdiction wants somebody else's boundary and they go to LAFCO and say, we want this and.
Well, the way it works with LAFCO, when it comes to spheres of influence, LAFCO gets to make that decision. If two districts are arguing over sphere of influence, well, LAFCO gets to make that determination based on. The findings that we've, we've, you know, been able to make, uh, when it comes to. Annexations. We can't force someone to annex or detach an area.
Why shouldn't?
We can, we can, we, we can't initiate, I should say, we, we can't initiate those. We can initiate the, and decide on the spheres of influence, we can initiate the solutions though. Of districts, again, you know, we have to have findings for that, so. But when it comes to the annexations and the detachments, that's typically not something that LAFCO gets the final decision on.
Reason why I was interested in this is the collaboration. So if we had, uh, a voice at the table.
Mm-hmm.
It would, um. It would help, I think, with the collaboration piece of things.
Mm-hmm.
And being able to work together on.
Right.
Making decisions and how that's done.
Right.
Um. And it helps with the, the idea of shared resources.
Mm-hmm.
You know, being able to do that and figure that out, so.
Sure.
So I, I, which way should I, I think you might have already answered this, Director Peralta asked, but, um. If, if the special districts apply and we go through the process. The current commission has no say as to whether, as long as we beat that threshold enough.
That's correct, the LAFCO law has it, so the special districts get to vote themselves in.
Yeah, that's kind of was my one fear, but that was, I just thought.
I think you were at our last meeting, we had that discussion.
That's why we asked.
Yeah. Yeah.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I think she covered it all.
I think she covered it, but yeah, I would absolutely like some spreadsheets, kind of.
Okay.
You know, a little more information, I think there's definite interest from our board.
Okay.
Uh.
I can do that.
So, yeah, I think it would be.
When I get that, should I send that to John?
Please. Then also the training opportunities you planned, if they, I would, I would like to hear about that.
Okay.
Actually, I do have one more question, in the last, let's say, ten years. How many times has LAFCO had to, have they interacted with OPUD? Either on our behalf or within a project we're working on?
Oh goodness, in ten years, how many projects have we done for you?
Not, not necessarily projects for us, but. Where it, you know, a question of sphere of influence, a question of project, um. You know, how that works out, you, ba- basically, I'm asking, how much influence does LAFCO have over OPUD and where we've missed out, where. We may not have had the voice that we needed at the table at the time.
Well, as far as spheres of influence goes, prior to this last attempt, um, I think it was back in two thousand and twelve, we did the last one. So we're well overdue for that, um. I will share with you that.
I see.
I've only been the executive officer for a little over a year now. Worked my way up, but we're gearing up to be more proactive, we'd like to be more proactive, I'm. In the process of beginning to come up with a strategic plan, and part of that is engaging more with the special districts and forming some.
Yeah, our, our attorney, Joe Love, has a question.
Okay.
I was actually going to help answer Director Peralta's question.
Okay.
Because I've been district council for the last eleven years, so I am aware of some of our interactions with LAFCO and. LAFCO has always been very collaborative with OPUD. Um, you may recall that when we, um. Were offered the opportunity to provide fire protection services to the, um, Enterprise Rancheria. Um, there were some objections and LAFCO worked with, uh, all of the agencies to reach a collaborative solution. LAFCO never reached the point where they actually had to make a decision on the issue. Um, and then OPUD has a couple of times over the last ten years sought to expand its sphere of influence. For the provision of wastewater services and LAFCO has, you know, approved, um, those expansions, again, without, um. Objection from neighboring agencies, but we've enjoyed a collaborative relationship with LAFCO and I will say. As OPUD was, um, working with LAFCO to update the most recent municipal services review. You know, Paige made herself available to meet, to discuss, to make suggestions about how best to move forward. Again, in a collaborative manner with our neighboring agencies, so that's my experience of our interactions with LAFCO.
Thank you, Joe.
Thanks, Joe. I have one more question, Parks is also under you as well, and.
Are we?
Parks.
Not unless, not unless, like, you guys provide park service, so under OPUD it is, but, um. Not, not a separate Parks District, no, we don't. Or not.
It'd be the same as with all of our other fire parks, everything, they, they, they have. There are no special Parks Districts in us, Indian County outside of Opa, correct? The counties have parks, yes, they're beyond the other entity that I know, but there are no CSAs.
Maritell, some parks, but nothing.
No, yeah, there's no other, especially district.
Do we have any other questions for Paige?
No.
I don't think.
Thank you, Paige, for being here tonight, bearing this with you, for listening to me.
Yeah, you need.
Sure appreciate it. And I hope you have a great evening.
Thank you.
All right. I'm going, thank you so much.
You can let us give that to you as soon as possible.
Um, thank you.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In the next, Paige. Yeah.
Moving on to our next slide, I'm receiving an update on South County's 145th call.
I don't have any update at this specific time, but it's open front of that.
Well, we'll just move right on and consider approving OPUD's warrant siren policy. We've been working on this for a while. It's gone through Ube County OES and Ube County Sheriff's Department. And we've worked and worked and worked to get it done. It's not, it's not a very large policy, but it is, you know, it's, it's needed for reasons stated. So, are there any questions? I mean, it's, or?
We still haven't, like, tested it. Are we planning to test it?
Yes, that's part of the policy. If you test it corporately.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, you know, it's gonna, before we do that, we'll want to do a lot of public outreach. So it'd be a lot of, yeah.
We want, yeah, I think part of that public outreach is, I think, paying the best to, you know, have a set of homes when we do it, so that we can report back, did we hear it? I think there was some concern that there's been a lot of growth and that will stop the sound from traveling, but I think it would be kind of interesting to see how far you do here.
We could just not tell the public and see how many people call in.
If I was to say that or just, like, run out to your car and offer a way.
Turn it right down and then spin out, so I think there's really something.
Do we know how far the warrant siren should reach? I just don't want to sniff that. I don't have any idea. I know that it was raised up quite a bit, what we wanted was before, it's been quickly rebuilt. And we tested it real, real quick and.
Does it sound like it was going to really that?
Yes. It's, it'll be pretty loud.
Through the chair, Randy says he'll be testing it in December.
All right.
It's a policy.
Thank you.
Yeah. Perfect.
Good. Okay. And have a motion. I'll move to approve the warrant siren policy.
A second.
First second, please call roll.
Director Burbank?
Yes.
Director Peralta?
Yes.
Director Flue?
Yes.
Motion carries three, approving two absent.
All right. Do you want to consider building agriculture lease with all S. Dome Ranches LLC? I can get this one real quick. It's, so this is land that will be purchased next to the wastewater treatment facility or expansion in the future. It's currently planted in almonds. They're not mature trees. I think this is probably the first year that he's going to get anything out of them. But it's a symbiotic relationship. You know, he takes care of land. You know, keeps the weeds down and keeps the, almost people out if there is any. And, you know, we don't really need it right now, so I encourage. Okay. Need a motion. I'm moved, moved to approve, moving forward, the approval of lease agreement.
A second.
First second, please call roll.
Director Burbank?
Yes.
Director Peralta?
Yes.
Director Flue?
Yes.
Motion carries three, approving two absent.
All right. Moving into public works, parks, receiving update on 145th full session. Season numbers, yay, look at that.
This is bigger than last year.
I believe that Director Peralta asked for that. Yeah, so, sorry if you were looking for it, but it is. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Very good. Do we have this? Can we publicize this in any way?
Certainly.
Put it on Facebook.
Yeah, or something like that. That would be great.
But. We'll do it. Any questions?
It's just nice to see that it's giving that attitude. I mean, we, we fight to keep it open, to keep people safe and out of the rivers and, you know, when there's almost seven thousand, that's, that's pretty big. I think last year was like fifty-eight hundred or something like that.
It's all there, so.
I remember right?
Yeah, it's one of the fifty-seven sixty-six for last year.
Yeah.
And it's about seventy thousand this year.
Yeah.
And the most important part is how many kids we teach in the swim.
That's, that's huge.
Yeah, absolutely.
Unless you do the John Wayne thing, it gets tough somewhere.
And Wayne.
Well, as long as we're just back in the pool and not the river.
Gilson, follow your daughter.
It's a good movie. That looks sad.
I don't know.
It's way my head did it.
That's it. Me too. All right. Any other questions on that?
Thank you for putting that together.
Oh, yeah, this is fantastic. Yeah, please share it. That's fantastic. Water, wastewater, receiving update on South County infrastructure. Uh, we're, we're working away. You know, we've had a couple of little hiccups along the way, but we're working them out. I'll just give you a real quick example. Pump station two, which is a gallon and Highway seventy over here, it's on the Highway seven, or it's on the Johnson Park side. Little postage stamp there next to the canal. The gentleman that's steering the hyper accurate costing, he was a contractor, so he also does buildability, constructability. And he said, can't do it, not enough room there. So you need to buy the house next to it or fill in some of the canal where you're doing it or change your design, because it's not going to work. And so we went out and we, we had a big meeting out there and we decided if we could use the existing wet well, the lift station that's there, that would save a lot of money and would solve our problem. And we had a company come out and expect it, I think it was yesterday or the day before, and looks great, so we're going to move on with that. Just little things like that. We're working through all the land acquisition and recent acquisitions. Going through frizzles and making offers and stuff like that.
Any pushback? Anticipate a pushback, I guess.
I hope not, because these are one, you know, we kind of worked through that a couple of years ago, where you ask people, if this were to happen, are you interested? And some would write in, hell no. And then some would answer it all. And after you go back and forth, and so that's why we had to change the sign. We were actually planning on doing a new lift station across the street where that old church is there. Couldn't get anybody answers, they just weren't interested, so. You know, even though it doesn't really take up any of their property, they get a lot of money for it, they just.
They, they didn't respond or respond at all?
No, they, well, they didn't respond and finally I got ahold of them. The guy said, oh, I'll sign it, have it back in a week. And I chased him down for like six months, got, I'll have it back in a week, I'll have it back in a week. And then I finally just said, you know what, we've got to move off of it.
Well, there's some people that don't, don't want to see growth, and I think that's still kind of being spouted, but.
Yeah.
They might as well just, otherwise it's going to happen one way or another, so.
Yeah, so, yeah, this, this is all to get around the, the hard rock projects came on the news, all over the news. I heard it on KAV the other morning, which surprised me. That's, that's a hell of a sub-irritation.
And they're doing interviews or they're just recording it?
They, they did an interview with Mark, yeah. He was on there, he was talking for ten minutes on there. I couldn't believe it. That's how I saw it. It's, it's, they're, things are picking up. It's, you know, once it reaches that level, it's probably going to happen.
True.
Any other questions? I'll move. Okay, so moving on to the other station, River Oaks, I'm saying, how's it coming along?
Smart.
Yes. Yeah, so currently, obviously, there's two portions of the lift station. There's the exterior portion that the current contractor is doing, all the connection points have been done. We have just the bio bed that we're working on. I actually met with Jacobs who's supporting on the South County project, because I wanted to get a second eye before we start laying the pipe of where, when the air is going to be sucked out from the wet well. That's going to be then going into the, it's going to be sucked in and going to where we're going to be fencing our new area, which we took a little portion of the park where it's going to be that bio bed. We're looking at a, I have a meeting with the, the design engineer, MHM, and with the Jacob team just to do a second look on that bio bed to make sure, once we lay that, everything's going to be good, not only for now, but also for the future as well as growth continues. So I wanted to get a double check on that. And there might be some minor updates that I'm going to have, uh, MHM provide to the contractor that's out there and the contractor is getting. He just got the fan and the fan should be coming in. And then I just wanted to make sure if anything on the design was going to change with the second look from Jacobs. Also for today, we are receiving a bid for approval on the interior portion of the work on that lift station. So those are the two aspects that are going on there, with both to be fully completed before the end of November. Exterior and interior works.
Perfect. Okay. Any questions? Did you say end of November?
Uh, correct, at the latest.
Yeah, that, that's for all.
Interior.
When, when we started the odor problem project out there, we also found issues with internal components of the lift station that had nothing to do with the odor problem that we have to fix. And that's what he's talking about, because the next couple of items here that you're looking at will be approving bid or awarding with that, that work. Ask for it if you got it by the end of November.
Okay. I, I'm just looking at Halloween coming up and the influx of people we have in the area. If we could add some amount before then, that would be great.
I think the odor portion, sworn correct if I'm wrong, but I think the only thing that they have to do is finish the, uh, the band, the.
Yes.
The final band and then wrap that up.
Correct.
Very good.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
So one question, were we able to get everything done so we didn't interrupt school starting? Were we successful?
All, all the exterior work is done, so there's going to be no associated traffic related going further.
Okay, good.
Any other questions? Okay. Moving on to, thank you, Swan. Moving on to consider approving awarding to the multi-quit LLC for OPUD Lift Station fourteen.
So what is, was there any question on that or?
Quite groovy, punk. Um, how do you pronounce?
Brunt.
Brunt. Okay. Any questions?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second. Have a first second, please call roll.
Director Burbank?
Yes.
Director Peralta?
Yes.
Director Flue?
Yes.
Motion carries three, approving two absent.
All right. Moving on to consider approving an awarding bid to Crestman Contractor for Lift Station fourteen into repair and replacement, Jett. Any questions on that? More vendors, probably looking for a motion, no to approve?
A second.
Uh, first second, please call roll.
Director Burbank?
Yes.
Director Peralta?
Yes.
Director Flue?
Yes.
Motion carries three, approving two absent.
All right. Moving into human resources, consider opening parks maintenance worker along the viral position.
So this is just us officially opening a position and then we would do the hiring process through the district's hiring policies.
Is this a, did someone leave or are we adding personnel?
So we've had, at one point, we had two parks maintenance workers along with the manager. They, one transferred over to another department, the other one left the agency. And this was a couple of years ago. Since then, we've had, we've hired one additional park maintenance worker. And at the time, Jesus was happy with that for the time being, so we closed that second position.
Okay.
So we're just reopening it in order to, you know, with the new state law, you have to every, once a year, announce whether you have any openings or not. So we didn't have technically any openings when we announced that. So now we have to announce that we have an opening so that we can move forward.
Okay.
So on this one, I believe we discussed this in the Parks Committee, and wasn't this one we're thinking of kind of sharing?
So we, we had, it, it was a discussion. It, it kind of was a discussion that just kind of popped up during the committee meeting. And so as such, I had to sit down with both Sworn and Virgil, because, you know, it would be coming out of his budget as well, and the idea was a half water, half parks position. I understand where Virgil's coming from. He's like, the busiest time of the year for the water department is in the summer. The busiest time of the year for the parks department is the summer. So that means that half the year, this person, you know, if you say, okay, we're going to do this so that we can put this guy in the parks in the summer, that means that in the winter time, this person is, is not, you know, it's raining, they're, they're, they're doing more things like in the shop. So that's not really a help to him and that it's taking money out of his budget. So he wasn't really interested in, in participating in that. And, you know, I'm going to listen to what the manager said and, and Sworn agreed with it. So for now, we're opening up a parks maintenance position and then we will look into potentially doing another one, once we see where we stand, budget wise.
Okay, so this will just be used in parks?
Mm-hmm. A hundred percent parks, yeah, which is, what do you mean?
Well, he, he does name, I think when we had that conversation, it was like hire one for him and then share one.
Yeah.
So we're still hiring.
So we're still, yeah, right now, we're just going to hire one. And like I said, Virgil's like, that doesn't really work for me. If I'm going to spend the money, I want to have somebody when I need them.
Yeah.
Rightfully so.
Okay. All right. For motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second. First second, please call roll.
Director Burbank?
Yes.
Director Peralta?
Yes.
Director Flue?
Yes.
Motion carries three, approving two absent.
Okay, consider opening engineering technician two lateral position.
So kind of the same thing. At one point, we had someone in the technician one position who was still there. And then we had someone in the technician two position. That person left the district a couple of years ago. And so, stop smiling, John. And so now the person that's in the technician one position would like to lateral up into the two. So we need to open up that, again, we have to reopen the position to do that.
Is this with wastewater or water?
So it is district wide.
District.
They do both water and wastewater things, so.
Oh, they're, they're going to be very needed during this South County project.
Yes.
For, to look out for our best interests as far as inspection. Uh, the, the person that's working their way up is very, been here a while. He's been very seasoned and I think he, I really support this. That'd be good.
So the, the, the plate.
Good.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second. First second, please call roll.
Director Burbank?
Yes.
Director Peralta?
Yes.
Director Flue?
Yes.
Motion carries three, approving two absent.
All right. Good work, committee schedule. Hopefully there are no changes.
Everybody will be present?
Yes.
I will.
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to reports, general manager report.
I don't know if you mean this thing.
Okay, legal. Uh, Joe, do you have anything to report?
Here me to jump.
She was shaking her head, so I'm thinking, no.
Okay, she, nothing to report, thank you. I couldn't like.
All right. All right. And then, um, directors' reports, anything to, directors?
I got nothing.
Nothing? Okay, so. Public comments? Everybody's quiet, okay. So we'll move on to our close session. Uh, close session with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation pursuant to paragraph four of Subdivision D of the Government Code, section fifty-four, nine, five, six, nine. And we have one case. We'll take a quick three minute break.
And then, uh, legal counsel is asked that the fire chief join in some of this.
I will be texting him and he has the link.
Getting urgent.
Record.
YubaSutter.live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies and Penske truck rentals. Details at plumaslakeselfstorage.com.
Hi, I'm Neil Goforth of Comfort Keepers of Yuba Sutter and Nevada Counties. Caring for elders or even yourself has challenges. Comfort Keepers of Yuba Sutter and Nevada Counties can help you address today's issues and plan for tomorrow with in-home and specialized care for you or your family members. Call us at five three zero seven four nine eight eight zero zero. Comfort Keepers of Yuba Sutter and Nevada Counties.